It just seemed, it seemed like it was more, you know, wasn't, wasn't sort of advised. It was a student, really completely stupid operation.
I know that we've connected the Roseville Reader and the Roseville Reporter's applications with Tara Miller. So I'll just confirm that the bill is back.
Yeah, yeah. No, I see. I mean, it's impressive.
Okay.
Organs, it's really, I was really impressed with it. I hadn't known about it. It just happened.
I'll add that to the board update.
We're good now, aren't we?
Can I speak up? Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, awesome.
Are we echoing?
No, it's much better.
Problem solved.
Yeah, so the problem is solved by turning off the speaker call. Okay, if they have pain mic. Okay, Wayne.
We are ready.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to our Roseville Area School Board meeting for Wednesday, November 12th. Clerk will please take the role.
Director Shaw.
Here.
Director Gaggins.
Here.
Chair Anderson.
Here.
Chair Rashka.
Here.
Director DeShaskin.
Here.
And Club Chu.
Thank you. Any agenda adjustments for this evening?
There are no agenda adjustments.
Thank you. Under announcements, comments, and recognitions, this evening's land acknowledgement will be read by Director DeShaskin.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. Roseville Area Schools acknowledges that we reside on traditional ancestral, contemporary, and unceded territory of the Dakota people. From Bedote, a confluence of the Mississippian and Minnesota rivers, a place the Dakota people poetically claim as the center of earth directly beneath the center of heaven, the Indian Mountains Park, a sacred place of burial, built by ancestors of older people, and home to the only known remaining burial grounds within the Minneapolis-St. Paul urban core, indigenous people have cared for this land. Through warfare, genocide, relocation, and removal perpetrated by colonizers to the state of Minnesota and the federal government, injustices that reduced over one hundred and fifty million indigenous people to around three hundred thousand, indigenous people have given their blood, tears, heart, resilience, and love to this land. Enduring boarding schools that were in operation from eighteen seventy-nine through the nineteen thirties, where assimilation through humiliation was the curriculum, and unspeakable atrocities daily. The foster care system, where more kids were removed from indigenous homes than any other group in Minnesota, indigenous people have not lost their culture or identity and still reside on this land. Roseville Area Schools is committed to ensuring the culture of our indigenous relatives, the original and rightful caretakers of this land, is studied, preserved, and celebrated. We are committed to understanding and honoring the sovereignty that has been denied to nearly six hundred indigenous nations, including eleven federally recognized tribes in Minnesota through the breaking of over four hundred treaties. We are committed to the truth of the history of our indigenous relatives, the success of our indigenous students, and to the healing we hope to create through this commitment.
Thanks, Mike. All right, number four, summary of community input received for action items. I've not been made aware of any. Okay. Moving on to this evening's consent agenda, I will, there are no retirements, but I will entertain a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda. We will conduct this by roll call. That is our initial motion.
I move to accept. Pass.
Second.
All right, great. Then moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, clerk will please take the roll call of the consent agenda.
Director DeShaskin.
Aye.
Chair Rashka.
Aye.
Chair Anderson.
Aye.
Director Gaggins.
Aye.
Director Shaw.
Aye.
And Club Chu.
Aye.
All right. Nice having you. Thank you. The gifts this evening will be read by Director Shaw.
Thank you. It's a privilege to read about the generosity of our community. First, there are monetary gifts to the media centers at Little Canada Elementary School and Brimhall Elementary School made by Wendy Thompson. We have two gifts to Little Canada Elementary School for just for school needs from Rebecca, Lamy, and from Do Good Rose. A gift from Shields to Roseville Area High School for academic athletic program. A gift to Roseville Area High School girls volleyball program from Brock and Marie Lindstedt. A gift, another monetary gift to the volleyball program from Jonathan Beck. And similarly, from Deborah Grease, monetary gift for volleyball program. A gift from Frank and Constan Tenidis for the football and boys' lacrosse programs. And I suppose I should say boys' football program at this point. We also have a gift to Roseville Area Schools in general, monetary gift for Tony Anderson for district needs. And finally, a gift from Karen Dority, a financial gift for district needs to Roseville Area Schools.
All right, that moves us to reports, non-actual items. We welcome to the table a wonderful team to go over the enrollment and demographic report.
By the executive director of teaching and learning, Ms. Jay Kondalindi. Thank you. We'll get our spaces here. I know we haven't started. There's a number of us that are present for this evening, but yes, this is our twenty twenty-five enrollment demographic report. And as I mentioned, Diana J. Monalisa, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. And we can start off with our members maybe from left to right.
Good evening, I am Marla White, our Associate Superintendent.
Good evening, I'm Iceta Thomas, Executive Director of Student Services.
Good evening, this is Floris Sanson, National Program Manager.
Greetings, Board. Delon Smith, Associate Superintendent of Secondary Schools.
All right. And we're going to get started. So we always have and start off with our district key goals and strategies. And many of our district goals are aligned with the report tonight, and I'll walk you through some of the specifics that we have. So goal two is our district, our learners contribute to an equitable, caring society. And the strategies that we have that go along with this report cultivate student engagement, enjoy, and learning, and prepare our learners to be racially and socially responsive. Through their time in our schools, we hope to prepare our learners to be racially and socially responsive. And in our schools, we believe in building a cultural belonging where all are feel welcome, included, and safe. We know that these provide the conditions for learning and success, which lead to graduation and beyond, which is why our district goal number three is there, we're a culturally responsive, inclusive, anti-racist district. And goal four, our goal four is that the community is united behind students' needs. And we know that we need to partner with families in our community to make sure that our students reach graduation and are successful in their years beyond school graduation. So just a reminder, or a heads up for those who might not know, our enrollment report is broken into two different sections. So we have the enrollment section, which is first, which provides updates on our current enrollment as of October 1st. And then our demographic report is the second part. And that provides information about who our students are as we begin this year. So I'm going to pass it along to Marla White, who will be walking us through our enrollment section.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Over the next several slides, I'll be sharing information regarding our enrollment. And this data comes from our enrollment office at the district center. It can be different than the data that M.D. reports as our data is updated more frequently. So this captures a more accurate number as of today and primarily October 1st. So this first graph shows our enrollment trend over time in grades K through twelve. Pre-K enrollment is going to be included in upcoming slides. This data is taken from the same data source each year. You'll notice that jump in twenty thirteen with the addition of Harambe, and I will address the decline in recent years in enrollment in a few minutes. Currently, there are two hundred and one fewer students in kindergarten to twelfth grade from last year to this year. But I will share some good news soon, too. So now this graph shows our enrollment including pre-K up to twelfth grade. Looking at our elementary grade level cohorts, they range from four hundred and sixty students to slightly over five hundred and fifty. And here's the good news, our pre-K and our kindergarten cohorts this year are larger than they were a year ago. So our current cohort of first graders is our smallest group at four sixty. And so looking at the chart, you see our kindergarten and second grade are larger than that and much closer to five hundred. We continue to see higher enrollment at our secondary levels, which is typical. Last year, over six hundred students graduated, and right now, we also have six hundred twelfth graders. A fact of contributing to secondary cohorts being about a hundred students larger than elementary is that at ninth grade, this is our largest entry point for open enrollment. And this is likely due to private school, homeschool, and other enrollment from other districts transitioning into high school. Here is a little bit more specific data about pre-K. From twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five, we see an increase of forty-two students. And that's a big jump in a program our size. This is positive news for a few reasons. One, the importance of early childhood education. And two, students that attend pre-K in Roseville Area Schools stay in our schools. And I also want to note that we do have twenty spots open right now, which we will continue to fill. We have an additional eleven spots open for students receiving ECSE services in our co-taught classes. Now, this graph more specifically shows our K-six enrollment data over time. If we look at enrollment trends across this last decade, there's a decrease of four hundred and seventy-five students. We continue to closely monitor enrollment and these trends as it is a significant need. I want to bring attention to the multiple factors that contribute to decreased enrollment in public schools, public school districts across our country. This includes declining birth rates, school choice, more online and virtual options post-COVID, and higher numbers of families that choose homeschool. So something that was really interesting to me was that ten years ago, there were a hundred and eight homeschool students in Roseville, and currently, there are two hundred and three. On this slide, you're going to see our secondary enrollment. The enrollment has differed by less than a dozen students for about the last three years and hovered around three thousand four hundred. That said, when we look at this year to just two years ago, we are down fifty-four total students in grades seven to twelve. Okay, this one is specifically looking at each elementary school's enrollment. So five of our eight elementary schools have seen a decrease in enrollment since twenty twenty, which correlates with the COVID-nineteen pandemic and the other factors that I just mentioned. Schools that are below the projected enrollment this year are Brimhall and Little Canada. Schools that more or less held steady are Central Park, Edgerton, Falcon Heights, Harambe, and M.D. Williams, with Parkview being slightly over their projected enrollment this year. When we look at those schools compared to a year ago, we have more schools that are close to their projected enrollment than we did last year. And now this is a look at each one of our secondary schools enrollment. For the most part, enrollment trends are steady here, and we see a slight decline at Ros. Because of the nuanced secondary classes, it would be almost deceiving to display a graph of average class sizes, as I will for elementary in a few moments. So we won't do this in this report this evening. But I do want to share a little bit about what's happening in one of our secondary schools. So this is specifically about Ros that are target for core content classes. In grades nine to twelve is thirty-six students. That's the target. At Ros currently, ninth and tenth grader in core classes, their class size goal is twenty-eight. The school has made this decision to have ninth and tenth graders in lower class sizes based on data of no marks and attendance. So this was done intentionally to lower those grades as they learn the routines of high school. And then in eleventh and twelfth grade, they're much closer to thirty-six. As well as their AP classes are closer to thirty-six, their FIED classes are forty, CT classes are capped at twenty-eight. That's for safety. Sheltered content classes and special education pullout classes range anywhere from six students to twenty-two. And then we also have classes like band and orchestra that are much larger. So there's such a range at our secondary schools for those class sizes. Now, this is, it is a little bit easier to talk about average class size for elementary, also because they are in one class the whole year. We don't have the trimester changes. You can see the average by each grade from twenty twenty-one up to twenty twenty-five. I'll look at kindergarten as an example here. In twenty twenty-one, our average kindergarten class size was twenty-point-four. You see it dipped down there, and now we're back up this year to twenty-one-point-five. This is all still within our average targets. So for kindergarten, our target is twenty-two. And I also want to highlight that I'm using the word target rather than cap because we do have a target in Roseville. So twenty-two at kindergarten, twenty-six for first to third grade is the target, and thirty-one in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. So currently, our district class size averages are all within our class size range and target. Now, that's a lot of numbers, but going back to a story or to highlight, better explain what all these numbers mean, our in-kindergarten our district average currently is twenty-one-point-five. The target is twenty-two. We all know that averages means some classes are lower than that, some classes are higher than that. So what we do when there is classes above that target, currently, we do have three kindergarten classes in Roseville above the target. We work collaboratively with the teachers in that space, the principal, to make adjustments as needed, which could include additional support in the room, other scheduling structures. This last one, this graph is a visual that illustrates the variance in class sizes by grade in school. So I look at this at first and go, oh, my goodness, what does this mean? So if you look at the color bars at the label at the bottom, you can see that that blue is Brimhall. Red is Central Park. And I was looking for, is there any line that kind of goes in a nice straight line? And that's our district average, which kind of makes sense of why our district average would be in the middle of those. It just fluctuates greatly. It can fluctuate from school to school and also within a school. Variations in our class size could be due to schools selecting to use compensatory ed budget funds for general education teachers. It could be based on the sizes of grade level cohorts at a specific building and more. So in an effort to better explain how this happens, I'll share a story of how this is playing out in our schools. You can see two, like if you look at first grade, there are two colors that are pretty low. And then they spike way up to second grade. That's because those schools have three sections of first grade. So when you have three sections of first grade, your class sizes are going to be much smaller. Then they only have two sections of second grade, which causes a big jump in class size. Those second grade classes still may be below our target or right at our target, but to the family experience, it feels like class sizes went way up. When really, and they did, but what happens is in collaboration with the teachers, the principal, and family input, we'll talk to staff about what do we do with it. We have five sections. We could have two first grade, two second grade, and one split first and second grade class. Oftentimes, the staff and families say they would rather have the three first grade rather than a split. And so then, the school makes support choices for those second grade classes with maybe literacy intervention teachers have more time with those classes. But that's kind of just one story to show how it's playing out and why a graph like this looks so up and down. And at this point, I'm going to turn it back to Executive Director Von Delindi to talk more about our demographic portion of the report.
Thank you. We are going to shift to the demographic areas, and these include race and ethnicity, multilingual learners, special education, and educational benefits. So the primary information for our demographic section of the report comes from the Minnesota Automated Reporting Student System, or MARS. And this is a submission that we make in late September, early October. Our special education data comes from Synergy, which is our student information system. And some of our comparison school information comes from Minnesota Department of Education Data Center. So a lot of different data sources. There's even some different data sources within some of our programs. So like our multilingual learner program is actually from two different reports. So you'll see some numbers that may seem contradictory, but it is the same numbers. And those all get rectified in January when the state looks closely and puts some of these reports together to match, so. But we always report these at this time of year, so it's consistent data for us, even though it might be a little bit delayed. So I am going to pass it on to my colleague, Delon Smith, our Associate Superintendent.
Thanks, Jake. So I'll get it started in this section by looking at demographics by race and ethnicity across the district. Go to the next slide. Okay, there we go. All right, so, okay, that's the slide I'm looking at. As you can see from this graphic, our percentage of students of color here is sixty-three percent. That's up one percent from the last time we reported this in twenty twenty-four. Eleven years ago was the last time we were fifty-fifty between students of color and our white students. Since then, we've seen an increase of about one-twenty-two percentage points per year for our students of color population. This, you know, some of this can be explained in the fact that there's been a change in our community as well. From the twenty twenty, sorry, twenty-ten, twenty to twenty twenty census, white population in Roseville has gone down about five-point-seven percent. This graph shows the trend in our enrollment over time by race, ethnicity, excuse me. You can see the district's enrollment gap is decreasing between white students and our students of color, as was referenced in that previous slide. Our enrollment for white students over the past six academic years has decreased at a rate of about ninety-two students per year, while our enrollment of students of color has decreased at a rate of forty-five, about forty-five students per year during that same period. We saw an increase in Rasha enrollment in our Asian and Hispanic student populations, and then once again, a decrease of enrollment in our white students population. Also, a bit of a decrease in our population for black students and multiracial students. Our American Indian student population has remained relatively the same from the last school year. And I'll speak a little bit more about that on the next slide. So, once again, the previous slide, if you maybe had your glasses on, you can see it, showed us the student count for American Indian, Native American students that was less than one percent. So around twenty-three students. So I just kind of wanted to explain the difference in that graph of this particular graph. So that's because the Department of Education has a definition, and there is a federal definition for American Indian students, so a bit of a difference there. The federal definition includes seven categories of students by race, inclusive of multiracial categories of students. And many of our Native American students fall into multiracial categories, so they may be Native American and something else. When we use the Department of Education definition, it pulls only students who are Native American, and it doesn't create another category for multiracial students. So to try to explain that more plainly is from a student experience. With the federal government in the definition, you can only be one thing. So if you are, if you identify as Native American, it may be Native American and black, let's say. You're going to have to be in a category, and you will be identified that way. With the state, you can be Native American, and there's also other ways of searching if you are mixed with another race. And so another thing I'll say is that when our families register, they can identify themselves as Native American, and that is also a number that the Department of Education considers when it comes to American Indian education, no aid. And so this two-thirty-five you see on here are the families who have identified themselves as Native American, whether they are full, or part, or however that is. What you will also notice on this chart is breakdown of students who identify as Native American by grade throughout our district. Yes?
So two-thirty-five.
Yes.
Is really, is the real.
Yes.
Because the twenty-three is extremely limited because of the federal definition.
Right.
Really undercounts.
Kids are considered that identify as Native.
Absolutely. Yep. Good question.
Is there a second question?
Yes, yes.
Is there any additional funding tied to this particular enrollment, if so, does that follow the federal or does it follow the state?
Yeah, if we're talking about just funding for American Indian, Native American students, yeah. So there are the two fundings with the state. We go over that two-thirty-five number, and the state, you know, recognizes that. And you can see that in the amount of funding that they give us, and they recognize the two-thirty-five number. With the federal government, it's really about, you know, tribal affiliation. And so we have what are called five oh six forms that families have to fill out. And we can get into all kinds of things around blood quantum and whatnot. But that's how the federal government looks at it, is how much, what percent of you are Native American, and can you prove it? Where the state is more allowing our families to self-identify themselves. So this, this is another way to look at the trend data from not the previous slide, but the slide before that. They have the lines on it. This table goes through information from the last twenty-five years. What I'll point out here is that twenty-two thousand, seventy-two thousand, one school year, our student population for our white students was almost a percent, about seventy-nine point six, and student of color population was twenty-point-four. Five years, twenty-five years later, there's been a big shift in that, as I spoke about, to sixty-three percent. Students of color are at about thirty-seven, thirty-seven point seven percent of white students. So this table shows a breakdown of enrollment by race and ethnicities. Includes our pre-K program. We just started, we started including them last school year. As you can see, sixty-nine percent of our pre-K students identify as students of color, which is about the same as we had last year. Buildings with the highest population of students of color continue to be positive at eighty-nine percent. which is about almost a four percent increase from the previous year. Edgerton's at eighty-six percent, about the same as previous year. And Harambe eighty-two percent, a little over a percentage change increases from the previous year. Central Park is another one as well, and they continue to stay the same for the last year. Our schools with the highest population of white students continue to be Falcon Heights at sixty-six percent, MD Williams at fifty-two. And as you can tell from the chart, those are the only two schools that are over fifty percent in that category. This is our educational review of white students of color. I was another time to be kind of interchanged with that, just to help with some context. But it shows them by building over the last three academic years. You can see that many of our students have experienced increases over the last three years. And I'll just bring to attention a couple of schools, like we said, you know, that continue to see increases as far as like pre-K, Parkview, if you look at theirs, they've continued to see gradual increases. Burnhole, if you can see it, has a slight dip, very slight dip, but they have continued to see increase over the last three years as well.
Do we have any fear that FAS has kids that are like over-identified for needing alternative help versus working more within the main?
That's a, yeah, that's a good question. We talk about eighty-nine percent of the students, and then, you know, we know that, you know, the FAS is pretty credit deficient. I do say that we're definitely a concern of, you know, how our system is generating. Absolutely. I don't know if I have any more?
No, 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 I just, it's just I.
It's a reflection of our racial opportunity gaps, because this district is serving a challenge to serve.
True, true. Yes, I think there's a number of factors. So this, this chart's another way to look at student population in our buildings. It's like the previous chart, but this is over ten years. You notice there is a span that this, I'm a math teenager, so I'm gonna speak a little bad language. But the steepest slopes, and that would be, that would be the, you know, going up or going down. But if we're talking about the steepest positive slopes, that's growth. And then if we had a negative slope going down, that means we're decreasing in those particular areas. But you'll notice that MD Williams has a ten percent growth from 2015 to 2025, from thirty-eight to forty-eight percent. FAS, forty-nine to sixty-one, twenty percent increase. And then Parkview has the largest, that ten-year span, thirty-four to fifty-four, so twenty percent increase in the students of color who are at that school. And then the final chart I'll share with you is a comparison of surrounding districts when it comes to the population of students of color. And just to kind of help you up this year, I put the comparable districts in white. And then surrounding districts are in gray. Out of the comparable school districts represented in white, let's get on this chart, only Burnsville, North St. Paul, Casio, and Robbinsdale have a higher percentage of students of color than Rosewood area schools. And so that's one thing I wanted to point out on that particular graph. Now, I'll turn it over to our multiple learning director.
Hanson?
Or Lourdes?
Florence Hanson.
Excuse me? I have to look at our.
Thank you, Executive Director Smith. So we'll start with the multilingual learners district trend. I invite you to look at the slides on the screen because we have made some significant updates since you received this packet. So please follow along with us. So the first chart here shows the trends in multilingual district enrollment for the last ten years from the year 2015 to current 2025. And according to the MARS Fall Home Primary Language Report, and compared to the school year 2024, we have seen an increase of three percent in our MLL participating in the English Language Development Program. So we have gone from seventy percent to twenty percent this year. While we saw a significant decrease in our student population in 2021, as you can see in the graph, the last four years show a steady increase in enrollment in our program. Next, please. So this chart shows enrollment percentages per school for the last five years from 2021 to the current year 2025. Edgerton and Little Canada show the highest growth in enrollment, as you can see at the very top, the blue and burgundy lines. Little Canada is currently the district's elementary school with the highest number of students participating in the English Language Development Program, with two hundred and twenty-eight students. During the 2020 school year, Little Canada had an enrollment of twenty-seven percent of students who were receiving ELD services or English Language Development Program services. Last year, we increased to thirty-seven percent, and this year to thirty-nine percent. So you see again those big, big jumps and increases. Edgerton has also seen an increase, was ten percent from 2020 to 2024, and this year is up to forty-one percent, so again, a slightly sharp increase. So currently, Edgerton is serving a hundred and fifty-two students in the ELD program. RAS has two hundred and forty-five students participating in the ELD program this year. So the last two years, twenty to twenty-four, sorry, the last, yeah, four years, it was ten to twelve percent. And from 2024 to 2025, we have gone up three percent.
So.
The line is there.
A little different from the light times.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a hard time. Yeah, those are the best. Just wanted to pay your attention here.
I tried, I tried.
Okay, so the next graph shows multilingual learners enrollment by building. And this is according to the MARS Fall Home Primary Language Report, Home Language Report. So as you can see, there are nine schools that show growth in the enrollment of students participating in the ELD program. Two schools, which are Falcon Heights and MD Williams, show a small decrease from last year from the students who are participating in the program. It's a one percent each. And again, Little Canada, as you saw in the previous graph, show the highest percentage of the students participating in the program. Ramsdale and RAS have also an increase of four percent for the middle school and three percent for the high school compared to last year.
These are, these are big, big increases.
Yes.
Any insight on that? Is it because, is it because of identification? Are there just more children coming?
Yes, definitely. More students are multilingual. Of course, there has been a movement of families seeking opportunities. There are some political situations taking place that also affect people needing to come to a different place. And I would like to also point out that a large number of students are also emerging multilinguals, which means they are taking first steps in developing language. So yes.
So the definition of multilingual, is it, is it, is sort of English assumed, and then the, the, the language at home is different?
Yes, students who speak more than one language typically.
But there's no criteria for how well they speak. It's, it's, it's just that they, they only learn two different languages or more.
Yeah, the Department of Education uses a tool called ACCESS. It's adopted in forty-eight states. It's a test that we use once a year, and that's what determines language proficiency. And when students come in, and they don't bring scores for that specific test, then we do a screening, and that's what determines if the students will benefit from additional support in their language development.
And to be clearly, these numbers reflect students who are receiving multilingual services, correct? So it's, it's not all the receiving service, not necessarily on the day to your. On the day to your.
Yeah.
With that video, like, how have we dealt with it? Like, we wouldn't, we thought that was happening? Like, that's why I'm going.
Yes. Very good question. Yes. So this year, we were able to welcome four new teachers into our team. Seventy-five percent are multilingual teachers themselves. And so we need to provide the supports, right? And so that's, that's what we have done. We also have increased the number of teachers who provide content area and ELD supports by co-teaching. So we have an increased number of sections at the high school and the middle schools. So the kids are receiving a double scoop, so the content area teacher and the English Language Development teacher. And we know by research that that's one of the best ways to provide the growth that students need. So they're exposed to not just the content, but also peers who are models and who also benefit from learning a little about other languages. Shelter content are also other ways that we provide support in both the middle school and the high school and here at FAS.
Thank you.
And the next slide talks a little bit about what you were asking. So this is a number from the Fall's Fall Home Primary Language Report, and shows that out of seventy-five hundred and eight students, twenty-eight hundred and thirty-two students in the district are multilingual. So that means students who have the benefit and the fortune to speak more than one language at home and perhaps at school, they're participating in the bilingual dual-language Spanish language program. And of those, twenty-eight hundred and thirty-two, we have thirteen hundred and ninety-two that are participating in the English Language Development Program. So kind of answer the question we have before.
Yes, the fourteen eighty-two is what makes up the chart in our previous page.
Yes, yes.
Like, when you frame it as gift, being a bilingual.
Sarah? We call them statistically gifted, because it's truly a beautiful thing to feel our brains working in a way someone, and watch it with the little ones. One thing that I did not point out in the previous, two previous slides, thank you. If you see, there is a very beautiful burgundy bar that says pre-K at the bottom. So we have those little ones also participating in our screening. And last year, we identified forty-eight students that are part of the pre-K and early childhood special education program who qualify for multilingual learning services, but we provide it in a different way. We do professional development for all the staff. We do consulting, and we do also support with curriculum adaptations and accommodations. There's only one bar because they're so wonderful and because we're currently testing for this year. So we don't have that most updated. We hope to get those numbers at the end of this week. So going to the next, it's always fun to look at the top ten languages among multilingual students, so again, students who speak more than one language, who at the top graph is, who do not necessarily participate or participate. This is the whole, the whole umbrella. And so you see that top ten languages, and a point of reference is sixty-two percent of our student population speaks English. And then the rest, which is quite a variety, as you probably remember, we have ninety-one different languages represented in the district. And the bottom chart shows the top ten home languages among the students who are participating in the English Language Development Program. They're pretty simple except if you look at Oromba, Vietnamese, we have more Oromba students participating, a high percentage in the ELD program than Vietnamese. And the last beautiful slide, Executive Director Von Delendi made a beautiful graph, and he says that that includes all ninety-one languages that we have in the district. It's beautiful, it's wonderful.
Does the size of each word reflect? That's random, random, random.
Next year. Thank you. I am answering now. Give the mic to Executive Director Thomas.
Great, thank you. So over the next several slides, I'll share information regarding students who are currently receiving special education in Rosewood area schools. Overall, we are seeing a number of students being serviced in special education staying constant at eighteen percent from the year before, with about thirteen hundred students receiving special education services in the district. And this slide gives information about the percentage of students being serviced by building. Things to note are that over at EDW, you saw a decrease. In Edgerton, you saw an increase of students receiving services, and this is due to the moving of removing two classes from EDW and adding three classes to Edgerton for students who are serviced in our Communication Interaction Disorder Program, or CID programs. This slide shows the breakdown of special education enrollment by disability area. Just give you a chance to look at that, and we can look at some numbers on the next slide, what that means. Yeah. So here are the numbers that we broke down. And you can see that we are highest area servicing our students who fall on the autism spectrum, and those are students that are primarily serviced in our CID programs. Yes.
Do you believe, with your experience working as the president of MACE as well, do these numbers compare to the state as well? Do any areas stand out?
No, we have seen a number in students receiving services for autism across the state. And then our numbers for our students that are serviced on emotional behavior disorders are decreasing. And this slide shows breakdown of special education enrollment by disability, by disability area across the ten-year span, is it ten, twenty years, sorry, span. Again, you just see the numbers fluctuate, actually. And then if you look at autism spectrum disorder, you see that they are going up.
All right, that's my chart, and I'll be back with you, Jake.
So we'll go into the educational benefits section. Just a reminder, educational benefits are typically financial benefits that students receive if their family income is at or below a certain threshold. This can include free or reduced meals, transportation, athletics and activities fees, and other areas. So this slide shows the percent of students' families that qualify for educational benefits over a long-term trend. As you can see, we have trended up from thirty-three percent in 2007 to forty-three percent in the school year. We see a significant decrease this year from last year. At this time, last year, we were at fifty-two percent, and this year, we're at around forty-four percent. And talking with our nutrition services supervisors, reported that many districts are also seeing about a five to ten percentage point decrease this year. One change is that the annual income threshold has increased, and so we're seeing less families that qualify. Another dip that we see over time was during COVID and post-COVID years. And then based on state law, we continue to offer our universal breakfast and lunch for all schools.
And Jake, tell me if I'm misremembering this, but at one point, I thought I'd heard that since moving to universal, free, you know, breakfast, lunch, maybe families don't apply, and so then we're just not identifying, right? Because they don't fill out other forms, so that dip could be misleading in terms of the reality out there.
And it, and it does increase from this point, I've heard, over, over time. So sometimes families will turn in some more paperwork performs and things like that so that we can increase that number by the end of the year. So this typically is our low point in the year, and then that increases. But it does show over time that this, this is a significant drop.
And, and this implication on funding, right?
Correct.
So even though the benefit of universal meals, we still need to encourage families who qualify to apply because it impacts the district funding.
Correct.
And sure, do you want to say?
Yeah, and not only that, we encourage all, we encourage families to apply because there's benefits to the families as well. We offer, you know, scholarships in some of the areas of transportation fees, activity fees, so it's beneficial to them as well. And yes, it impacts our compensatory rep. Um, and yes, it impacts our compensatory revenue, which is under big task force analysis right now at the state level. And then also our federal funds. But it is, we try to remind families that it's beneficial to them, you know, family as well.
Thank you.
So this, this slide provides a look at the trend data based on each of our district's schools and programs. Our district line is in light blue across the, um, the middle with the percentages. I find this slide helpful as you can see the range and variance in our schools. Obviously, when we look at just the average, it hides some of the discrepancies between our sites. As you can see, we have a wide range from twenty percent at Falcon Heights, um, and to seventy percent at Fairview Alternative High School and Harambe. This slide shows the same information as the previous slide, but in a bar graph and only for the last, um, three years of data. So you can see the largest changes over this three-year span are at, um, Rams by fourteen percentage points and Central Park at about eighteen percentage points. And then, um, Little Canada at about eleven percentage points as well. So before we complete our report for this evening, we'd like to take a moment to thank some of the staff who have worked behind the scenes to pull some of this, um, report data. Um, and gathering the data and putting it together, um, it's, it takes a lot. It's not an easy lift and it takes a lot of time. So we want to thank, uh, Lindsay Most, Colleen Angela and Tina Clausen for their time in pulling a lot of this data and information together for us.
Absolutely. Any questions? Yep.
Thank you, Professor Thomas. This special education, a number of students that are people who are in our district, they don't attend our schools. Of those, uh, including?
It includes all the students that we are servicing.
If I recall, we bring in some of the people we used to like contract with, you know, like F. Hard, like interpreters. They would have to pay outside and we hired them.
Oh, yeah, that was two years ago, yes. We did. We used to contract, um, two of our, um, DHH teachers and we did hire them. Yeah, oh, good.
Uh, just the last slide that we were just talking about, you know, like, like one of the large drops at Central Park. Any insight as to what might produce an eighteen percentage point drop of that? Or maybe that can't be answered, just anything happened differently there or just anything?
I don't know. I mean, I have assumptions and I can be connected to work more.
So, so, my, go ahead. So given that we know that it impacted the financial of each of the school, is, is this something that retroactively, if we increase the number by the end of the year, that we get the funding retroactively? So I'm just trying to understand because it's, there is a deadline, right? So whether the number in the beginning of the year versus the end of the year, how, how do we reconcile that?
So the way that it works as far as our funding goes, both state and federal, is they use what's referred to as the October one count. But we get a couple of scoops at it, right? A couple bites on the apple. We submit a file in October as our first, uh, our first submission. We submit another, um, file that actually goes into November and then December and then, um, we actually think it's early January. So all of those things, even though it's our fall count, we, we get that data in. It does, uh, if we get that data in, by the time we do our early January submission, it counts towards our October one count, if that makes any sense. And then we are locked with.
I see.
So anything that comes in after that fact, after the fact, won't be reflected, um, in that funding for that next year. But it does, again, I mean, if we do pick up, we pick up students, um, Jake said, we pick up students between now, um, and even like December fifteenth. Because families become more aware, um, yeah, and principals do, do reach out, um, as well.
So do we have data that says this is the number we are now? And then, and then the fact that we do, we are able to not get impacted so great by January before the numbers get locked in? I'm just trying to look at, because what we get reported is October first. And so, but it sounds like there is another set of numbers that gets sent. And I just want to, it's just, yeah.
Yeah, because when it, when it changes as far as a family or a student's, um, qualification, um, that doesn't like really lock into it. It doesn't go into effect as a certain date. So that's why we're allowed to include that. And nobody may get the data in November or December. That's why we're allowed to include that in the, like returns to this fall submission. And our last fall submission is early January.
So, so what I'm asking is that by the time you, you, um, submit in January, are we still seeing some gaps in terms of families who should, um, applying for the benefits?
We have, it may be more emphasized this year, especially with, um, things, um, honestly, with our, with things going on in immigration and political status. People are hesitant to share that information.
I would assume that we're always missing families.
Yes.
Unfortunately, always missing.
Yes.
Frank? Am I being kidding?
Okay, I just wanted to ask, you begin to support with giving us some of the, uh, district goals. So we've got, uh, district goal number four, two and three. And as, as I went through the report, I thought, well, this is data. Um, I'm wondering how you, so you made the decision to put those goals there. So you have a sort of a connection then between those that I'm not seeing. What, what, um, what in these goals then is, or maybe I should say it, um, in this way, that, um, how, how are the district goals advanced by this report, by what's coming in, the gathering of these data?
Yeah, I think it informs a lot of what we do. And I think, um, we always bring this to our district coaching advisory committee as well. Because I think it's important for our, um, our community and for ourselves to know who the students are that we serve, right? Because we know we have changing populations of students. And if we're not looking at this information, then we might not be serving the students, uh, that we have in our today. You know, if, if you're not looking at that, and, and that's why some of the trend data is really important for us to look at. If you go back twenty years ago, we're a very different district in terms of race, race and ethnicity, in terms of, you know, our, um, population of normal students. And, and you need to really think about how we're serving students, um, with those changes. And so that's, that's kind of the tie-in that I see. They really help to inform, uh, the practices that we use, the curriculum that we're bringing in, uh, the impact that, um, just our, the diversity of students that are within our bill, how we interact with students needs to be very different and changing every year. So that's why we bring in some of those strategies and also really think about like, what are those areas that we're connecting to any board report that we bring? How does that connect to those areas, um, from our, from our, uh, strategic plan? Because we feel like those are important things that we continue to bring back to our, our community. And really thinking about our community broadly too. I mean, that was a number, goal number four, um, on our community, United Vietnamese, our students' needs. And our community needs to know who those students are. And so I, I think it just kind of informs those pieces. Like we're talking.
Thank you. Thank you.
First of all, I think that was a great explanation. I was saying, I was thinking, but like, we like, if we look at like goal two, I was just looking as we were having this conversation, that one of the strategies is cultivate student engagement and joy in learning. What does that mean for a student who, you know, like we were seeing in our multilingual work, students who may be in your country and that number's going up, um, and maybe their, their English proficiency is, is, is at a lower level at this particular point? What does that mean to cultivate student engagement and joy for that student, right? And so the more the more where in our district, where our demographics look like, like Jake was saying, the more we can be targeted on those particular things. Otherwise, we, we, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm cultivating student engagement and joy in a way I don't understand, right? It may benefit people who also understand it like I do or maybe have the same experiences. But what does that mean for people who don't have the same experiences? And for us to know that information, um, once again, like Jake said, just helps us to really, you know, apply those goals and strategies that we certainly want to have for our district.
I would add, thank you, Jake, thank you, Delon. I agree with everything you've shared. I would also simply say that this report sets the foundation for the annual report, which will appear in, in the next board meeting, right? In terms of who we're serving, because we may have the same exact district goals and strategies for the strategic plan in both reports. Thank you.
Katie.
My question was just a little bit, uh, well, first of all, I want to, uh, express appreciation for all the different kinds of information that's collected and shared. I think this is really very valuable information, very useful, so appreciate that. Um, I was just going to ask a rather practical question, which is, um, around our, our educational benefits dollars. Um, assuming things don't change dramatically at the federal level, and I also understand that a significant amount comes from the state. But isn't a lot of that dollars used to buy down class size? And so are we expecting if we have a reduction in those, that that may impact class size at all?
Sheri, you want to start?
Yeah, so that definitely, um, of that roughly nine million dollars that we receive in compensatory, uh, revenue, uh, roughly twenty, twenty-five percent of it, we use at the district level to offset some, or to support some of our class sizes. But the remainder is definitely, that's allocated to the sites. That's one area that principals have a lot of discretion there. And the majority of those dollars do in fact go to buy down class sizes further. Um, so it definitely has, it definitely has, has a large impact. And that's why, that's why they have, uh, the task force. I think, uh, initially, we would have seen a reduction, uh, this year of about five hundred thousand dollars. Comparatively, I believe it was St. Paul that was looking at like a eleven million dollar reduction in their compensatory income here. So, um, the legislature put a whole harmless then for this year. And now, um, the task force is working on that and they will report back and the legislature will have to take action this spring. But it's, there's definitely a lot of money there and it is one of those areas where it is somewhat discretionary. One of those few areas because so many things have mandates.
We'd be cutting a significant number of staff.
Yes.
Revenue.
Yes.
Or even a reduction.
Yes, a reduction. So we monitor it closely. And, and that's part of the charge of the task force is because of the reductions in, um, families being removed from Medicaid and some of these other things that are occurring. How can they hold that line? Or how can they look to fund that more consistently so that those dollars aren't so, um, vulnerable, I guess? Or I'd like to, but, yes, so, um, and maybe it's measuring another factor.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Thank you, really good.
All right, uh, moving on to this evening's agenda, moving on to action items. Canvas of the election. Michelle?
Okay, well, there was an election on the floor.
What?
The school board team have a ballot, we all have a project election on the ballot. And the school board is the candidate board for the election result. So we're asking you all to approve the resolution that is in your packet. And the abstract that you have in front of you has been prepared by Rampeh County Election Office and S.A.
Wonderful. Excellent, fantastic, Michelle. Um, so, I'm glad, look, true. Uh, we are not getting the entire resolution, it's already kind of a pre-meeting. So what we will read, take it away, look, true.
I note that the school board adopt a resolution canvassing returns of votes of the Rosewood Area School District General and Special Elections held on November fourth, twenty twenty-four.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Okay. Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? We will have a roll call. All right.
Director Brice?
Aye.
Chair Sheref?
Aye.
Chair Anderson?
Aye.
Director Gargens?
Aye.
Director Shaw?
Aye.
And Clark Chu?
Thank you. All right. The ayes have it. Congratulations. Congratulations to the ayes. And also a special thank you, shout out to the community for approval of the safety and technology levy. I'm sure there'll be some of your things in the future, so, thank you.
If I may, I just like to recognize and thank Michelle Tesson, who is on the, who is on things for emergency elections. And that's a lot of work that happens in the background, so thank you for all of that.
And thank you for paying to do the contract, so I don't have to.
That helps.
Thanks for the prep. All right, that brings us to this evening's study session. Director Frank Shaw.
Thank you. I am, I am reporting on the study session just ended. We had this afternoon starting at four thirty and going on till a little after six. We, uh, had three agenda items. The first one, the one that took the most time and was the most informative, uh, is the K six math team program design phase. They're moving into a program design phase. Um, and you're looking at the evaluation, which are data gathered, uh, to then move on to the design phase. We had, along with Jake and Linda, we had Ellis Richardson, Belly Vang and Gretta Toon with us, reporting. People with deep knowledge of, uh, K six mathematics and who have put a lot of time in studying the Orombans. Uh, they reported to us that, uh, the last time we put all this together, which is a decade ago, uh, we had allowed for different curriculum being taught at different schools or even different curriculum taught within the same school. And they're recommending that we move away from that to something which is a little bit more consistent, uh, across the district. In particular, uh, it needs to involve CGI, which is a cognitively guided instruction. Um, they're looking at that and, uh, as a best practice as well as the notion of process over product. So we had, we had some discussion about that and, um, are looking forward to their moving now into the design phase, which will ultimately, um, result in the selection of curriculum materials to move forward in this way, move forward in mathematics. We had as a second agenda item, a second reading of the school board handbook. This is, uh, pretty much the end of a process that's been going on for a full year. It was one of the goals of the school board for this, um, year, twenty twenty-five, to have this handbook in place. I spoke to, um, people who had been newly elected to the Falcon Heights City Council and they were immediately regretting that they didn't have a handbook. And so I'm glad that we are providing a handbook. I would have, I would have enjoyed a handbook. I was, I was taken out, I was mentored when I came on. I was, I was taken out, I was mentored when I came on back in 2005. And, but, but there was, there was still a lot that I didn't understand. I didn't have, for instance, a notion of what chair did. That was, that was kind of new to me, because I hadn't sat with a chair before, and there was no explanation of it. So I was, I was surprised when I found out slowly what was, was there. So anyway, that's our school board handbook, which is moving through to being fully accepted next, next week.
November 25.
And then finally, we had the school board self-evaluation. I guess it says finalize the self-evaluation. We had good discussion around our chair. This is one of the things he apparently did, is, is for five areas of potential improvement, and bringing, bringing out what, what has been done, and what needs to be done with general. So that was all very well organized, and we are now moving into the next year, I guess I will be moving into it, but you are moving into next year with a clear sense. Did we go over the three, there were three goals for 2025? I haven't, I haven't written down. For 2026, sorry. One of them is the dashboard.
Implementation of a mentoring program.
Implementation of mentoring program, which of course is how the handbook works.
Then more intentionality with reaching out to, we still need to finesse the.
Yeah, 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 okay, okay. With reaching, with reaching out to our district.
Dashboard in regards to the levees, student outcomes, and our strategic plan.
Yeah. Good, good.
And you know, I will keep you updated, even though you. I will keep you, one of us will keep you updated.
Okay, yeah, yeah, on how those, how those goals are going. Turn out as a community person. All right, thank you. So that was, it was a very, it was a robust meeting, it was a good, good meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate you, in your report, this evening's session. Someone told you at the beginning of that study session, we needed somebody to volunteer. Thank you very much.
It's my honor to do it, it's my final study session.
Thank you Frank. All right, starting with, moving on to board reports. Kitty, how about a board report?
Okay, I had an opportunity to attend the Equity Leadership Advisory Council, it was our first meeting of the year, and the agenda was really around where have we been and where are we going? We reviewed a survey of what the committee's found most valuable about the committee. Some themes were things around the focus on equity, the sense of community, listening, stories, policy, street data. For many of us, it's a favorite committee, because it really involves heartwork. We have three parents on the committee, one is a new recruit, and we're like, we'd like to try to get more parents. As happens over time, folks move on, and we need to get some more input from parents in the work that needs to be done by the committee. And there was discussion around, even if we don't expand our, our parents, or even if we do, how do we get more diverse perspectives? Into the work of the Equity Leadership Advisory Council, which it really has one goal in law, which is around providing the equity and integration plan for how the dollars that we spent that we received from the state in this area. And the second one, that was, our role of the committee was to look at where are we going in our strategic plan, and are we delivering the kind of equity work that we have outlined in that plan? The second committee I had a chance to go to was earlier today, was a community advisory committee. We had, Rose Chu and I were the board folks who could attend that meeting. It was an excellent visioning session. Its goal was really to help provide the committee some more focus and clarity on how the committee can advise and work with the school district. It, we talked about what's going well around our, our work as a community advisory committee, where were there opportunities, what kind of actions to take, we prioritize those. What was selected as the top priority was a, developing a clear list of needs from Roseville Area Schools, so the community can better provide the support. And there was a lot of conversation around that, great ideas all over across the board, and a lot of really excellent insight that needs to be digested and thought through, and will help us, help guide the, the work of this committee. That's it.
All right, thank you. Frank?
Let's see. I attended the Falcon Heights PTA meeting last night, and that may be the last PTA meeting I ever go to. It started, it started when my kids were, you know, in third grade at Brim Hall. It's been, it's been a good experience all the way through. The PTA is, is so important in, in school life, and in the communication between the schools, the school and, and the parents. And at Falcon, the tradition is to have a group of teachers report what's going on with, in their particular grades, in their particular classrooms. And this was, this was, is always, is always of interest, and I think it's, it's great to have that communication. I also went to the student musical last weekend.
Mother of the star.
Wonderful one. So we have Carrie Thomas, who was the, played as SpongeBob, this is the SpongeBob the musical. I have to say, this is great. But, but I went. And Carrie was, was just wonderful. And she's such a strong actress, she has a wonderful voice, and she's a presence up there. And I find that really pretty thrilling. I think high, high school is a great time to be doing music. I also wanted to mention Ariana Casellas, is that, am I saying it right? Who is, who also was sort of one of the, one of the three leads, and Lou Larsen. As I was looking up to get that, because I'd left my program here, so I wanted to get this, these names, I searched around, I found the school newspaper, the newspaper at Rhodes, which is called The Veal. I recommend, I recommend it to everyone who's interested in our high school. It was really well laid out. There are good articles, there was a very, very article about SpongeBob itself, but there are some good articles about a variety of subjects. One of which was the MCAs. So, so this is something that's really worth looking at, to see what the students are saying about the MCAs. I want to just give a quote at the end of that article, which is, if you are taking, make sure to put in an effort. It's a drag, but it could, could really help out in the long run. And, and you know, I think, it's a student who is doing those tests, right? It's a student who has to sit on the desk and fill in the blanks. And so what the student is thinking about this, I think is, is important to know, see. I appreciate every article. They also have podcasts on there. It's, it's, it's a thing. And it's not, it's not superfluous information, it's, it's good information. That's it.
I'm having a hard time working into who listens and finds out. That is awesome. Right.
Oh, the 90th Board meeting was last week. We had a presentation from Jill Starr Keller, Director, career in college residence for all the, for intermediate districts, but she came from 116, and she went over, and over 20,000 students annually anticipate in the CTE, I'm thinking through the intermediate, which some of our students do as well. And really, we approved the language access plan, and it wasn't much difference, some people talked about it. Valuation. Thanks to the community once again.
Thank you Chair Anderson. So with several of my board colleagues, I was able to attend the Roseville Area Schools Foundation Annual Fundraising Event, held once again this year at the Cedar Home Golf Course Clubhouse here in beautiful Roseville, Minnesota. Very well attended. And again, it's just very, it's thrilling and exciting to see and hear and meet all the folks in the foundation who kind of run it, and then all those who supported with their donations, let's be honest, you know, money is the milk of everything, right? And just to hear about some of the neat things that the foundation has been able to fund, we've been talking about the Native American books, either written by, or about, or with characters who are Native American or Indigenous, that then were merely purchased and distributed throughout the various libraries in the school district. Which was individual teachers applying for grants to do that, and then getting the money awarded via that grant system by the foundation. Or bigger stuff, as we've talked about before, the foundation helping pay for the fees for Abbott, and that program being expanded through various levels of our grades, which we would be able to do without their support. So it's a great night, there's different things going on there. Different kind of little contests. And it's, it's not too late, you know, if you feel, I like being generous again, in addition to directly supporting these schools, as many folks do, you can also support us indirectly through Roseville Area Schools Foundation. And it's a real easy website, because it's the rosevalleyschoolfoundation.org. Just to clarify, the foundation is a separate entity that exists legally separately, but their mission is to help collect donations and then fund, grant, supported money to the district for things that otherwise couldn't happen, as part of the whole process. So just another fun evening to meet people who, in the end, share with us, not just their equity vision, but their passion about helping kids who, who live in the district, succeed, or communities to succeed and do their best. So, yeah.
Yeah, and I would add to that, I was there that night, it was amazing that it was happening November 5th. Right after, you know, kind of like.
It was almost as if it was the natural celebration of the nice ass day. It was great, anyway. So the only thing I'll add is that I had a chance to attend the kindergarten information night. Oh my goodness, it's, it's just so much fun. The little ones, the family, it was so well designed, just great carpet to walk into the community center, community ed center. So, and, you know, just, for me, it's a chance to say hi, right, to all the folks who really try to, kind of like really, make sure that our families, with young children, know that this is the place they come to, and all the programming they have to do. So it was, it was wonderful. Highly recommend, you know, never went to one of these, it's just amazing. Thank you for everyone, there were so many people who loved it, to me, to me, thank you.
Just a couple announcements, Roseville Schools recognizes that November is Native American Day of Christmas. We honor and celebrate the history, cultures, and contributions of America's first principles. And also, Roseville Schools recognizes that yesterday was Veterans Day. We are very grateful to all our veterans, those who are currently serving, and those who have served, for their dedication to our country, the sacrifices they have made to protect our freedoms. So, thank you. Answer, but answer.
Thank you, and good evening. Last Tuesday's election day marked an important moment for our community, as local voters approved our capital project study. This is an exciting time for a district, as we now have a dedicated source of technology funding to support building safety, security, student learning, cybersecurity, infrastructure, and communication. We're deeply grateful to our community for their continued support and trust in our schools. Thank you to everyone who serves as valuable ambassadors in sharing their why behind our levy effort. I'd also like to congratulate Treasure Alex Clark on his reelection to the board. And also congratulations to two new incoming board members, Hade Cleveland and Michelle Mossman. Thank you.
All right. Any further business before the board? If not, stand adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks Kitty.
Thanks for being here, how you doing?
Thank you.
Thanks Kitty. Good luck with the baby. The baby.
It's here, right? Or not here yet?